Please join me in the prayers. Dear God, today as this session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted this day the wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessings and all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Please join me in the salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for what it stands, one nation, unencouraged, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Counsel Rourke.
Here.
Counsel Scott.
Here.
Counsel Yem.
Here.
Mayor Chow.
Here.
Counsel Drinkwater.
Here.
Counsel Gitchia.
Here.
Counsel Janess.
Here.
Counsel Leahy.
Here.
Counsel Mercier.
Here.
Counsel Noon.
Here.
Counsel Robinson.
Here.
That's 11 yeas.
Any moment of silence or memorials from anyone? Here and now, we now continue with the mayor's business. And before we start, I don't know if the camera catches it, but a lot of the counselors, all the counselors wear these beautiful scarves that are made by their young adults from the Mass Hire program. This program is to train young adults, from teens from school all the way to their professional
Way through reading and second reading by title. In the city council order pursuant to chapter two sixty-six of the Code of Ordinances, City of Lowell, Massachusetts, concerning section two sixty-six dash six, thereof entitled, temporary experimental regulations, temporary traffic regulations are hereby implemented for a period up to sixty days. Any comments or questions by councillor, councillor Yan? Motion to move?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say that the resident who live in that area, they just concerned that sometime the traffic went by so fast. So hopefully, they would like to see the city implement some sort of the calming measures to slow the traffic down on that street particularly. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No other comment. I motion to adopt by councillor Drinkwater, second by councillor Gishia. Mr. Cloak, roll call, please.
Councillor Rourke.
Yes.
Councillor Scott.
Yes.
Councillor Yan.
Yes.
Mayor Chow.
Yes.
Councillor Drinkwater.
Yes.
Councillor Gitchia.
Yes.
Councillor Lehi.
Yes.
Councillor Mercier.
Yes.
Councillor Noon.
Yes.
Councillor Robinson.
Yes.
Eleven yeas.
We now move to section nine, which are the ordinances from the city manager. Nine point one, ordinance amend chapters two sixty-six vehicles and traffic, commercial parking. Any comments, questions, councillor Gishia?
Thank you. In the back, it says two sixty-six dash one forty-nine violations and penalties. I just don't think the punishment is high enough at fifty dollars. I think it should be one fifty, two hundred. It should be something that actually deters people away, especially when these things are in our neighborhoods. It's something that we, you know, and people say, oh, this is what other communities do. But why don't we be the community that other communities follow and say, this is what they do, so then start following along? I just think that fifty dollars is not enough of a deterrent for people to be parking in neighborhoods like that. And I would ask that, I would make a motion to make that at one hundred and fifty dollars in that spot. So strike the fifty and add one fifty to that if.
Mr. Mayor, I agree with everything councillor Gitchia said. There are other things too that I think we should discuss. If I could maybe send us to a subcommittee, transportation-wise, if we can call it, and then go over all these things, if that makes sense.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Motion by councillor Rourke to move this to the Transportation Subcommittee, second by councillor Gishia. On favor, I oppose, say no, the ayes have it. Motion is carry. We now go to nine point two, ordinance amend fee schedule, weights and measures. Any comments or questions by any councillor? Here, we now need a motion to refer to public hearing on January third, twenty twenty-three at seven P M. By councillor Yan, second by councillor Rourke. On favor, I oppose, say no, the ayes have it. Motion is carry. Doing quite good. We do have some time for maybe one report from a subcommittee. Section ten is support, subcommittee, the first one is the Finance Subcommittee, December fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Any report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a little long, so I'll try to make it brief. But so, the subcommittee met on December fifteenth at five thirty P M. Present were myself, councillor Gitchia, councillor Robinson. Also present was Connor Baldwin, CFO, Austin Ball, Assistant CFO, councillor Janess, Terry Ryan from Parking, Steve DeShane from Water, Manager Golden, Lisa Golden from Health and Human Services, Phil Jeffrey from Health and Human Services, Paul St. Seer, Kelly Oaks, the auditor, Aaron Fox and Water, John McKenna and Law, and councillor Drinkwater via Zoom. So the order of business, the first order, Mr. Baldwin provided a presentation to the entire city council's subcommittee. He outlined the first item being emergency expenditures, noting the background of Massachusetts law, procedures and definitions, and the current total of sixty-three thousand dollars. Mr. Baldwin indicated that if the council chose not to vote affirmative, then the funds would then be taken from current appropriations instead. Councillor Scott opened the portion of the agenda to the public with no response. Councillor Gitchia noted that there is enough budgeted to cover the costs, especially from surplus of permanent salaries, so no need to vote on the matter. Councillor Gitchia also noted that the issue with employees and overtime, they should report for work when called. Councillor Robinson noted the expenditure figures. Mr. Baldwin noted that expenses are not complete and that it does not include possible claims. Councillor Scott questioned if vote was necessary at this point and Mr. Baldwin voted, I'm sorry, noted vote should be revisited, could be revisited when needed. A motion was made by councillor Gitchia, seconded by councillor Scott, for the subcommittee to not support the expenditure at that point in time. The second item, the second item was a presentation regarding the parking fund. Mr. Baldwin outlined parking enterprise by noting statutory background, setting rates in accordance with the cost of operations, fund forecast, and discounts. Mr. Baldwin noted last increase in fees was in two thousand seventeen, and that many changes are proposed due to current parking study recommendation. I noted that the need for tier, there was a need for tier parking pricing. Mr. Ryan noted new kiosks can be adjusted to different programming. Councillor Robinson noted that the need to parking, I'm sorry, to have parking incentives for businesses. We opened the issue up to the public, and multiple residents spoke regarding their concerns around parking price increases and the need to look at the entire picture of our parking, including placards and other sources of revenue. Councillor Robinson noted discussions will continue with added meetings. And a motion was made by councillor Robinson and seconded by myself, requesting the city manager provide a report regarding possible costs and procedures needed to move parking enterprise in-house. And then the meeting was closed at that point in time.
Any other comments or questions by any other councillors? Any comments here, none? Need a motion to accept the reports, the reports of progress and to adopt the motions by councillor Yan, second by councillor Janess. On favor, I oppose, say no, the ayes have it. Motion is carry. We do have a few minutes, and there is a second subcommittee report on the Parks and Recreation Subcommittee of December twenty twenty-two. Councillor.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Parks and Recreation Subcommittee meeting met at five thirty this evening. Present was my colleagues councillor Eric Gitchia, councillor John Lehi on the committee. We also had Alethea Dice Pierce, the second Assistant City Solicitor, was there to give us her expertise. Sean Machado, Assistant City Manager, was there as well. Also there was Marie Farah. Marie Farah is the reason we had the meeting to begin with, because on November four fifteenth, she brought forth a petition and concerns about the dog park and how there's really no rules governing that. So she was putting some together, which I thought was very creative on her part, but it isn't up to the public to set rules and regulations. It's up to the city council, because we're the entity that owns the land at the dog park. Marie went on to say that she didn't like the pea stone that was put down there, because pea stone tends to get hot in the summer, and it burns the paws of the animals, of course. She's probably right about that. She said that it would be better if it was, the dog park was made on the bottom with dirt, mulch, sand, or even grass. A portion of it has grass, but pea stone is really out of the question. To that end, she removed it with a group of about five people and put down something else, which, it's city property. We appreciate her expertise, but she was not really supposed to do that. But with love for the animals, she did. So then I referred the floor to councillor Eric Gitchia, and he said, I appreciate what she did, but it's the city that would put this together, and the city controls that. It's not the residents. The city could be held liable for people that would take it upon themselves to do that. But we thanked her for being a good citizen. It's just that the city should dictate rules, not residents. It's controlled by the city, of which she brought our attention to the fact that rules need to be set. Councillor Lehi agreed with councillor Gitchia, and to make a long story shot, a motion was made. It was through a motion to recommend that we send the dog park issue to the city manager's office and the law department with input from Animal Control to draft rules and regulations to be posted at the city dog park. All in all, it's a work in progress. This is just the beginning. We've more or less adjourned, but technically, we more or less should have recessed, because this is going to be an ongoing process. Rules and regulations were presented, dog park rules that we stumbled across. Maybe you could get some good ideas from that. But through Solicitor John McKenna and Ms. Pierce, we're going to come up with a good plan and post the rules and regulations. So it's a work in progress. Thank you very much. And that's the report as presented. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Any other comments or questions on that subcommittee report? Here, none. Need a motion to accept the reports, a report of progress and to adopt the motion by councillor Gishia, second by councillor Janess. On favor, I oppose, say no, the ayes have it. Motion is carry. It is now seven o'clock. We will go back to the agenda where we left off, which was on the general public hearings. That is section four. We'll start with four point one, the ordinance create position opera administrative assistant. This portion is now open to all those in favor. Open to all those in favor. Here, none. This portion is closed. We're now open to all those who oppose. This section is open to all those who oppose. Here, none. This portion is closed. Any comments or questions by any of the councillors? Councillor Gishia?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. Mr. Manager, this, these two positions that we're talking about, the position where actually we're in front of us, that's approximately a two-year position?
Mr. Manager? Yes, please. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councillor, these positions are scheduled to be for four years, so starting theoretically in March of twenty-three through the end of twenty twenty-six.
Okay. How did we come up with a salary range?
We based the grant fiscal coordinator position on an existing position within the police department, and then increased it by one sort of pay grade or one grouping to make it more attractive, to try to attract a, someone that has more skills, that can hit the ground running straightaway. And then the administrative assistant was based on an existing pay scale.
For me, I disagree with the pay scales. Currently, we have employees in the city who've worked here thirty years in some of these positions, and they don't get paid with these get paid. And I guarantee they know Munis better than anybody who can come from the outside. So when you start reading this, and just because we did financial stuff, when you look at atmosphere, employee retention, these are the things that retain employees or you lose employees to. When you start looking at treatment of employees, and you start looking across the board, and you start saying, okay, we have an office manager at wastewater, in water, that make less than what this fiscal coordinator does, but they do grants, they do water billing, they do everything from this, plus the list goes on and on and on. And then you just said, you know, we took the police department and we decided, hey, let's put another step on it. So what's that say to the person who's in the police department? You're not adequate? I mean, when you start looking at these things and you start seeing that, this is just poor management in my end, in my belief. I came through the ranks. And when I was in a position and I seen something like this come up, what I consider, they're just titles. But the functions are basically the same as we have within our workforce currently. It's not fair. It's not even close to fair. I know people who've been in manage, you know, the manager's office, we'll take that. The manager's office, his administrative assistant doesn't make this. You don't think she does this type, you know, can, has a full day, a full workload? I mean, at the end of the day, when we start doing these things, we have to start taking the rest of our employees into consideration when we start putting these steps together. And to me, just because we think this is free money, let's spend it, it's opera money, it's not really our money, it does have a trickle-down effect on our employees in this building. And to me, I can't support it at all because of the way that it's drawn up. And just by your words, you know, we took that and we said, okay, let's knock it up. And to me, I can't support it at all, because I can tell you right now, unless someone's coming from Andover to here, or another municipality to here, they're not going to know Munis, and they're not going to know our purchasing, our purchase order system. And quite frankly, most of the stuff, DPD already came to us with draft program requirements. They did all of this stuff already that's on here, listed as somebody's job. So right now, I support the workforce that's here. I think that these should be paid in line with what we currently have on the books. And, you know, on my end, if you're coming in, you should be on the low end, because we have people here who've been fifteen, twenty years that don't make this type of money. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions, councillor Rourke?
Has this position been given to somebody yet?
No.
Can anybody apply for it?
Yes.
Does it follow the qualifications to the position?
Correct.
Whether they work for the city currently or not?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Here, none. Need a motion to adopt by councillor Rourke, second by councillor Yan. Mr. Cloak, roll call, please.
Councillor Rourke.
Yes.
Councillor Scott.
Yes.
Councillor Yan.
Yes.
Mayor Chow.
Yes.
Councillor Drinkwater.
Yes.
Councillor Gitchia.
No.
Councillor Janess.
Yes.
Councillor Lehi.
Yes.
Councillor Mercier.
Yes.
Councillor Noon.
Yes.
Councillor Robinson.
Yes.
Ten yeas.
We now go to item four point two, ordinance create position opera grant fiscal coordinator. Give second reading. I'm sorry. This portion is now open to all those in favor. This section is open to all those in favor. Here, none. This portion is closed. Now, this portion is now open to all those who oppose. Open to all those who oppose. Here, none. This section is now closed. Any comments or questions by any councillors? Any questions? Need a motion to adopt by councillor Noon, second by councillor Lehi. Mr. Cloak, roll call, please.
Councillor Rourke.
Yes.
Councillor Scott.
Yes.
Councillor Yan.
Yes.
Councillor Drinkwater.
Yes.
Councillor Gitchia.
No.
Councillor Janess.
Yes.
Councillor Lehi.
No.
Was it? No. Councillor Mercier.
Yes.
Councillor Noon.
Yes.
Councillor Robinson.
Yes.
Nine yeas.
We now go to section five, utility public hearings. Five point one, Western Gas DBA National Grid requests replacement of two thousand two hundred and thirty feet of gas main on Wellesley Avenue, West Albert Street, Walton Street, and Preston Street. This section is open to all those who are in favor. Open to all those who are in favor. Here, none. This portion is now closed. Now, open to all those who oppose. Open to all those who oppose. Here, none. This portion is now closed. Any comments or questions by councillor? Councillor Noon?
Mr. Mayor, motion to refer this to the inspection.
Motion by councillor Noon, second by councillor, councillor Rourke. You have a question?
Yes, please. So there was a resident on Wellesley Ave. I know that the city was involved with earlier, that I'm hoping that this can rectify the situation. And that resident has been in touch with the manager's office. And maybe this is more of an overall, I guess, not necessarily a problem, but situation, that there was overtime that had to be paid to these employees from the city that the resident was giving the bill for. Has that been rectified, that situation?
Mr. Manager?
Councillor, not at this time, but I should have an answer for you before the end of this week.
All right. So it's part of a larger, I guess, solution. Could we look at, because I know an engine, you know, I think that from what I understood, issuing the permits was a problem, because it was off the clock, you know, and the resident had certain problems that had to be dealt with ASAP, right? And I know the city has been very good with this resident, and speaking with her and her family. But I think overall, as a bigger, I guess, problem to address would be, is, you know, how does that work? And, you know, should a resident be hit with the overtime bill, you know, for something that was not their fault, right? It makes sense?
Mr. Manager?
Yes, councillor. I was just talking to the Assistant City Manager about this case, and we are still actively working with the, with the folks over there.
And for the record, the resident has been thrilled with the Assistant City Manager's, you know, participation and his involvement with it. But again, I think it's a bigger situation that hopefully it doesn't happen again.
Correct. And hopefully, we will have this wrapped up before the end of this week, I hope.
Thank you.
Right, thank you.
We had a motion adopted by councillor Noon, second by councillor Scott. Mr. Cloak, roll call, please. All in favor, I oppose, say no, the ayes have it. Motion is carry. That completes the public hearing. We now go back to where we left off earlier. We're going to start with section eleven, which are the petitions.
Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Yan.
Request a suspended rule and moving my motion twelve point two up, because we have a speaker in the chambers.
Okay. Motion by councillor Yan to take item twelve point two out of order, second by councillor Robinson. Our motion twelve point two is councillor Yan request city manager have the appropriate department maintain the Katoa Way, including installing trash receptacles, empty them, and police patrol, second by councillor Scott. Councillor Yan, would you like to have the, Mr. Cloak, please call the registered speaker?
Betsy Saint Orange.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I am here tonight because I want to support the motion of Paul Radajem. I think it's a great addition in having trash barrels at the Decatur Way alley. But the alley needs more than trash barrels. Right now, it's in pretty bad shape. There is poor lightning going on. I want to say pitch black, especially during night hours. There's also a metal fence which is thrown down and allows trespassing. And the metal fence belongs to the, it's property of the city of Lowell, is what I learned yesterday during a meeting, the Action Neighborhood Meeting, that Mr. Olet, Dave Olet, had yesterday. He did mention that it is the city property. And it's concerning. I've been cleaning the alley, keeping the maintenance with it, with my volunteers. I recruited a good group of volunteers through my community page, and also through my coalition. And in the past eleven months, we've been doing, you know, hard, hard job. It's very hard to work there. It's not easy. And what we saw is that also the neighbors in the area do not cooperate in keeping up with the maintenance. So we may need like signs like no loitering, clean after your dog, because we encounter a lot of that people while we were cleaning, you know. And also, cars go in the alley. Like, if we can have a sign saying, do not, you know, enter, or do not exit, that will be also of great help as well. And I think that it's a beautiful project, you know, for the community. It brings communities together. It brings children with the beautiful art. It's an outdoor art gallery, basically. And I think that we can all contribute to keep it, you know, nice, clean, and have other organizations as well, even the city of Lowell, in bringing in more volunteers to help, because there is times where we're just only three or six of us, and it takes hours of cleaning and maintenance. But definitely, the trash barrels would be a great addition in the keeping of the maintenance of the alley. Thank you.
Councillor Yan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and want to thanks the speaker to come up, and because she brought to my attention that Decatur Way, if for people at home may not know where Decatur Way is, Decatur Way is offshoot from Decatur Street, which is from Salem Street to Merrimack Street, between the Mercier Center and the Cory Market. And then on the left, there will be Decatur Way. This Decatur Way was the hard work of David Olet, who, while he was working for the city of Lowell, he took upon himself with a few volunteers to create that and make it into an art mural. Unfortunately, Mr. David Olet, he went, he left to work for another city. So the project was taken upon by a group of volunteers, including Betsy and her group. This summer, I also participate in cleaning the overgrown on that, on that Decatur Way. I was told that the property is belonged to the city, so I'm asking that the city would put it on the, on the agenda for the cleaning coming up this springtime, and then maybe have police patrol once in a while in that area. It's a small alleyway. It's an art gallery by a lot of Latino community and artworks there. So that will be helpful. And at the end of the Decatur Way is a portion of the land donated by UMass Lowell. So if the city can put that on the schedule for cleaning and maintenance, along with the volunteer, including Ms. Betsy. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Councillor Janess?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to echo the sentiments of the speaker and councillor Yan. I, too, was at the neighborhood meeting and heard about the current state of Decatur Way. I remember being there for the grand opening of it six years ago, or whenever that was. It was great, and I understand that, you know, things have gotten less great over there. So I look forward to seeing what the city can do to bring it back and take care of it. And I only ask that we, you know, stay in touch with the neighbors over there as we make decisions. I know that, I was talking to somebody today who told me that there used to be trash barrels there, and then that was kind of the peak of the city having lots of issues with trash pack pickup. So the barrels were removed because they were full and not being emptied. And so that led to a nuisance for the neighbors. So if we're going to put the barrels back, we need to make sure that they do get emptied. And like I said, just, you know, partnering with the neighbors and making sure that we do what they want to see over there, and we take care of it. You know, the fence is clearly an issue that needs to be resolved. And so I just look forward to bringing this back to where it was when it opened. Thank you.
Councillor Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the city manager, there are people that come forward and ask for help, and expect the help, and do nothing in return. Not this case. Not at all. These are the very people that are asking the city for help. There's a fence that's black wrought iron. It's deteriorated to the point where I don't know if it was hit by a car or what happened, but it needs to be repaired. These are the people, and let me take you back to day one, when this Decatur Way, I knew this Decatur Way, and I seen people sleeping there that were homeless. I seen mattresses there. I seen trash there, garbage. Through the efforts of David Olet and a group of people, they cleaned it all out. They, I was there as well, six years ago, when they had the open house, the grand opening of this transformation of a dirt trap to a beautiful place where people could go for a walk, enjoy artwork. They're asking for help. These are the people that I want this city to help, because they're not saying, give me, give me. They're asking for assistance because they put their heart and soul into this area and made it a state-of-the-art area. And so I commend them for coming forward and say, can you please help us? We've done everything that we could. I know firsthand the beauty that stays there. In fact, I'll tell you a little fine thing that happens there. There's blotches, patches of cement, and you walk there, you don't think much of that until it's raining, and then the water transformed these little spurts of cement into like a little dinosaur, or a chicken, or an animal, some sort of an animal. I don't know how it does that, but it does. And it's, I mean, I'm fascinated by it. So if we could help them, I'm kind of asking, please, these people deserve to be helped. Thank you so much.
Councillor Robinson?
Thank you. This is one of those examples citywide where we ask the community to step up and improve and keep an eye and maintain, and no different than the dog park, no different than even, hopefully, what we're going to see happen on Middle Street where the murals are. These are organic areas that the community has came forward and improved to their liking, and they're asking for support. I filed a motion early on this year, seeing if we could provide somehow a cat trailer like we already have through DPW, but with more like gas-powered or motorized equipment, like a hand blower, a weed whacker, that could be coordinated with the DPW to come out on a weekend when they do neighborhood cleanups. These are the kind of things that will help the community. And Decatur Way is a prime example. Couple leaf blowers on a Saturday cleanup that the neighborhood organizes, and DPW place up in the springtime in a couple of hours with the elbow grease from the neighbors. So I mean, again, anything we can do. And if And if lighting, it's another thing we've been seeing citywide. Major improvements with something as simple as a streetlight, improve lighting. It chases the bad stuff that's going on out because it illuminates it. So any improvements, I would fully support. Thank you.
No other comments? Counselor Yam, one more comment?
Yes, just the last comment to echo what Counselor Robinson said regarding the lighting. I went through Decatur Way last night, and the lighting is very poor. If that can be added to create more security. The family who live on both side, the property facing Salem Street and then the property facing the Merrimack Street, and they have children, the children sometime riding a scooter and bicycle on that Decatur Way. So it's another playground for them. So if we could do some more lighting to increase safety for that particular area, that would be grateful. And then repair the fence so that there will be no personal injury due to the poor condition of the fence. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Here are no other comments or questions on favor, say aye, post say no, the ayes have it. Motion's carry. No other suspension of rules. We now go back to where we left off the agenda, which is the petitions, Section 11. 11.1 Claims for Property Damage. Any comments or questions? Here and now, need a motion to refer to the Law Department for a report and recommendation by Counselor Janes. Counselor Nunez?
If I may, just mention something on the, at least one of the claim and maybe a few other, particularly with regard to the Moody Street flood victim in this claim as well. I also want to commend Assistant City Managers, Sean Pachatos and CTI for working and helping this one family's 34 Ray Street and trying to find them at least temporary housings. And I know they put on claim already because of the insurance already, let alone don't care about whether or not they unhoused. Said, "We are not going to, we are not going to honor the claim." So now they need help. And so the city, if you could, specifically with regard to this one claim, do what you can to address this issue as soon as you can for them. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, we had a motion already. We got a second by Counselor Scott on favor, say aye, post say no, the ayes have it. Motion's carry. Item 11.2 is miscellaneous car haul, request installation of handicap parking sign at 18 Lewa Street. Any comments or question by any counselors? Counselor Nunez?
Mr. Mayor, if I refer this to the transportation engineer? Thank you.
Motion to adopt by Counselor Nunez, second by Counselor Drinkwater on favor, say aye, post say no, the ayes have it. Motion's carry. We now go to Section 12, which are the City Council motions. We start with 12.1. Counselor Robinson request City Manager help property department provide a detailed plan on maintenance and treatment of pedestrian walkways, bridges, and inclement weather, second by Counselor Janes. Counselor Robinson?
The reason I brought this forward again is because I noticed we had a little bit of weather so far in it. A lot of the walkways weren't treated. So anything we could do, again, sometimes it's not the blizzards that can cause the biggest problems. A little bit of ice can go a long way. And so I'd like to see a proactive approach from whoever's going to be responsible for maintaining this. So if weather's on the forecast, let's get them out there. And another piece that's been overlooked for quite some time is, for whatever reason, the people that maintain the walkways in the downtown business district, they're not really called in unless we have multiple inches of snow, which could be kind of treacherous on a black ice situation. So that might be something that I'd recommend DPW take a look at, too. Thank you.
Counselor Janes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, thank you to Counselor Robinson for bringing this forward. But also, I know that DPD maintains a spreadsheet of all the various walkways around, you know, the canalways and the riverwalk and all that, and who's responsible for what. We're at the start of the season, I would ask that that list be reviewed, and any private entities that are responsible, we reach out and remind them that they're, what they're responsible for so that we're not playing catch-up, you know, just to be proactive on that situation. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Here and none. On favor, say aye, post say no, the ayes have it. Motion's carry. We already have taken up motion 12.2, which was by Counselor Yam. We now go to motion 12.3. Counselor Nunez request City Manager help property department provide a report on the Citizens Advisory Committee, including members and activity accomplishments to date, second by Counselor Scott. Counselor Nunez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This motion, this issue's, the formation actually of the Citizens Advisory Committee came about over a year ago, you know, regarding the DI at the time when Mayor Leahy was, Counselor Leahy was mayor. One of the, the thing we did was the creation of this committee and to, the idea is to task this committee, the task is to enhance police department ability to respond to the need of the community. I know that a list of things that they're supposed to do to date, I'd like to see where this committee stand, you know, as far as membership, as well as the activity they have accomplished to date. Report on that would be, and having committee member to come, representative of the committee member to come and speak as to what activity or accomplishment they've done in term of enhance or the police department respond to the community. It's important. The other things that we have not done is the, at the time, Counselor Leahy and then, then mayor talk about is to have a group that the mayor himself create to address this, the DI issues as well, and that hasn't happened. But I'm more concerned of what has been established and yet to date, about a year already, I don't know where that. So report on that, the number of the committee we have, the standing committee, as well as the report on the activity to date. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Here and none on favor, say aye, post say no, the ayes have it. Motion's carry. We now go to motion 12.4. Counselor Nunez request City Manager help property department provide a report on 131 Midsex Street, formerly occupied by Garcia Brogans, regarding status of new tenant, second by Counselor Rook. Counselor Nunez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This came about, actually, I filed a motion around these issues as well because some litigation between party, you know, went on and, you know, I can't get report because it's out there. Right now, my understanding is that the party may have dissolved, a new member may be joining. We just hope to see where we at on it because this is an additional venue to the downtown Lowell. You know, we're talking about last council meeting, about trying to get businesses to Midsex apartments and maybe central. It's tough, it's difficult, particularly on Midsex. And Garcia Brogan left is partly because, partly because of that. And so where we at on the hot pot? And, you know, a day like this, we want some hot pot, right? Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Here and none on favor, say aye, post say no, the ayes have it. Motion's carry. We now go to next motion, 12.5 by Counselor Janes. Counselor Nunez, Counselor Gishia, request City Manager help property department prepare a detailed breakdown of parking pass holder and group agreement quantities by garage and by rate class to inform decision-making on the parking rates going forward. Who would like to go first? Counselor Janes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion mostly speaks for itself, but, you know, we're just looking to get a full picture of all the revenue inputs into this equation so we can figure out how to best reevaluate this going forward. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Here and none on favor, say aye, post say no, the ayes have it. Motion's carry. Motion 12.6, Counselor Janes, Counselor Nunez, request City Manager provide City Council with a list of agencies, churches, and social services organizations who provide homeless individuals with winter outreach, shelter, services. Who would like to go? Counselor Nunez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know that we have homeless coordinators, Ms. Fitchpatrick, as well as the Lisa Golden in charge of the Health Department have done a great job in these areas. You know, I know that the last council meeting, we talked about that who do what, you know, what the number of shelters we have in term of low transitional living centers, CTI, or elderly children, whoever do the work. I think Counselor Rook mentioned as well that, look, if someone were to come, give us a call right now and say we need a place for unhoused person, we should have answers to that, and that unhoused person needs some mental health. We should have answers to that as well. So we should be able to have lists, a list of things in organization that provide those services ready to go at all time, especially during this cold season, cold time, you know, from now till, say, April. So I think we can do that. I think Director Golden, as well as Ms. Fitchpatrick can do that. And that, you know, have it on our website and have it on council so that some council would have it too in cases that we get a call. So that's the gist of it. Because I know that we have a great partner in the city in term of shelters, service providers, food bank, and so on. So let's bring everyone together, let's share information, let's work together. Thank you.
No other comments or questions? On favor, say aye, post say no, the ayes have it. Motion's carry. The next motion is 12.7 by Counselor Janes. Counselor Nunez, request City Manager provide City Council with a report detailing response protocols for emergency disaster events. Further requests, request said report include information relative to feedback provided by residents on where improvements can be made to said protocols. Who would like to go? Counselor Nunez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I filed this motion last week as well. The only thing didn't add was resident. And I heard that residents from the Lowell Housing Authority spoke and gives great suggestion on it. So if we add that component to it, we have this respond organization, we have BIMA, we have Red Cross, we have all those entity, but also individual will be helpful. And then we have a complete picture of, you know, the after, after response, so to speak, so that we, when something else happen in the future, we know better and how to respond to it.
Counselor Janes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I echo everything that Counselor Nunez said and agree with him. Once again, we think everyone did a, did a great job responding to this, but there's always room for improvement. And the most, the best time to figure out where those improvements are is as soon after as possible. So just having these discussions is important, as everyone knows, to figure out what we can improve and, you know, make things better the next time because it's not an if, it's a when. Thank you.
Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. I believe this motion, similar motion was filed. Can we refer this entire thing to the subcommittee? Because I believe the last motion that was filed similar is supposed to be a report brought back for discussion to the subcommittee.
Which was the subcommittee, Mr. Manager? That you want to say something?
I believe it was, was it Public Safety? I think, so the last motion that's very similar, it just, it left out the language involving the residents was referred to the Public Safety Subcommittee, and I would just look to make a motion to refer this entirety.
Absolutely, motion to refer to Public Safety Subcommittee, second by Counselor Rook. On favor, say aye, post say no, the ayes have it. Motion is carry. We now go to the last motion of the evening. 12.8, Counselor Drinkwater, Counselor Gishia, request City Manager direct the appropriate department to provide a report on funding opportunities for energy efficiency and solar energy projects on public buildings through the Federal Inflation Reduction Act and the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Acts. Who would like to go first? Counselor Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've discussed a lot at this council, the council's desire really to invest in solar energy projects to achieve down-the-road cost savings and addressing energy efficiency in our schools and other public buildings through temperature controls and things like that. And when you look at these two pieces of legislation that have passed into law at the federal level, there look to be some very generous benefits that are available out there to cities and towns that want to make these kinds of investments. In fact, in a lot of ways, they sort of unprecedented for municipalities, anyway. The sorts of tax credits and direct pay type benefits that are available through here aren't typically available to cities and towns because cities and towns don't pay taxes to the IRS. In this case, these programs were written specifically to be able to direct pay and offer reimbursements for up to 30% or 40% of project costs for things like solar. So I just think this is a great investment that's been made by our federal government, and money's made available to cities and towns. So just hoping to get some investigation and a report back into these programs that are available and whether it is feasible for us to apply to or really just apply for the reimbursement for some of these projects that we've discussed here on the council floor. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments or questions? Here and none on favor, say aye, post say no, the ayes have it. Motion's carry. We now go to the announcement section. Any announcement? Counselor Scott?
Just a quick announcement. I just wanted to make sure that residents were aware that the trash and recycling schedule for Christmas week and for New Year's week has not changed, that it's the regular schedule. If you could just clarify that, too, City Manager. Thank you.
Any other announcements? Everybody can make announcement except for Counselor Yam. Any other counsel, any announcement? Counselor Yam?
Mr. Mayor, know what's coming. We all want to wish you a very, very happy birthday, and I'm told that you turned 26 today. Happy birthday, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other announcements? No one else? I do have a quick announcement and very, very simple. I'd like to wish everyone in the entire city on behalf of the City Manager's administrations, the council members, a happy holidays to everyone. May all your wishes come true, and may there be peace on earth. Thank you. With that done, I need a motion to adjourn by Counselor Janes, second by Counselor Robinson. On favor, say aye, post say no, the ayes have it. Motion's carry.